At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Bruce.Lampract@Marshall.
The, um, we will add the appointment to the Convention and Visitors Bureau and we'll add that immediately after Agenda Item Number 17. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be consider the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on November 7th, 2022, and the special meeting that was held on November 17th. The council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note at this time? If not, if it entertain a motion to approve the minutes of both meetings?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by John. Discussion on the motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes.
Wasn't here. I was not either in the meeting, so I real stand my hand out.
Okay. We will move then to Agenda Item Number 2. This will be consider the awards bids for rock salt for the street department. I'll call on Jason Anderson, city engineer, director of public works.
Thank you, Mayor. Proposals were received for 350 ton of rock salt for our street department on November 16th. We received four bids with the low bid coming from Johnson Feed, Inc. of Canton, South Dakota, in the amount of $89.26 per ton for a total of $31,241. We did include $45,000 for the purchase of road salt in our budget, and staff would recommend to award.
Any questions on this recommendation?
Just a check is, you know, I believe they were bidders last year as well. And any issues with receiving it, getting here on time? Everything's a normal situation?
Yeah, I think if you look in the tabulation, back in 2016, they were awarded one of our contracts, and we've had no issues.
Okay. Any other questions for Jason? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Jim. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll now move to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening, and they include consider the approval of the 2023 wage schedule for temporary and seasonal employees, consider the renewal of the memorandum of understanding with Prairie Home Hospice and Community Care and the City of Marshall for emergency shelter at Red Baron Arena in Nexville, the flood plain management ordinance amendment. This is the introduction of that ordinance and calling for a public hearing, introduction of the ordinance amending the section related to construction and maintenance and the minimum size regulations. Action would be calling for the public hearing, the, as well as the introduction of the preliminary plat of DG Marshall. The action would be to introduce a plat and calling for the public hearing, the renewal of the unlicensed maintenance electrician inspection agreement for 2023, 2024, consider the approval of a raffle permit for Holy Redeemer Church, consider approval of various 2023 liquor and tobacco license renewals, consider the authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for the Marshall Police Department, and consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purpose of a separate discussion?
Number three, please.
Any other item? If not, is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. So Agenda Item Number 3 is consider the approval of 2023 wage schedule for the temporary and seasonal employees. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for personnel or Sharon or Jason. I see in here that we were want to include the wage for a temporary building inspector position. Why would we need those positions? It says department being overwhelmed with new development.
I'll start with an explanation on that, Councilmember Labatt. That position has been on the schedule for many years. At this point in time, we're requesting just an update to the pay information for it. It has been on previous schedules, but staff has not requested for the, at least the last few years, for the pay to be adjusted, and we haven't hired into that position in many years. If we would have an employee on an emergency leave situation, that might be an instance where we would actually request that we hire into this position, but that would not occur without Jason's direction and Sharon's approval.
So for many years, we've never hired this position. So why do we have it in there?
At one point in time, we did. Jason, I can't remember when that was.
Are we trying to predict the future here? We're gonna have, you know?
No, it's a fair question, Councilman. I think that it's really there for unforeseen circumstances. I think in, maybe in 2011, we hired when we had the hailstorm come through, and we were completely inundated with permits, and we couldn't keep up. I know with the building inspector position in the past, we've had health issues that have, where we've lost employees or had employees sidelined for long periods of time. Those are situations where we may look to hire somebody on a temporary basis, and we'd look to use this job description and pay schedule.
We also ventured to say that it's probably, these positions are probably identified in our emergency operations plan for that very reason, based on natural disasters, some other occurrence. If we had anything that started to create building damage or debris where buildings had to be inspected either before demolition or reconstruction, you'd need to have these inspectors in place. Even if they come in voluntarily, if you get past 72 hours with FEMA, you have to have a pay schedule, or you have to bid everything under an emergency. So it doesn't cost us anything to have a placeholder, and I think we want to have that foreseeing if there is a problem in the future. It's very typical that you'd have these positions identified.
May I, Mayor? Just be very clear that we are not proposing to hire anyone at this point in time at all. It's not being discussed.
Mainly a kind of, I'll call it housekeeping, kind of.
Correct.
Bringing the current position descriptions up to speed.
You know, and I can go all the years of building, and I know you and I chatted about this, Russ, earlier, but I think 2011 is the only time that we've ever had a temporary one that I can remember, and that was after that, after the lice storm.
Sure.
After. And I know that, if you recall, we had two building inspectors in a row, actually, unfortunately, get sick. The city was left with a void for a short period of time. But I think the only time in my building career which goes back 30 years, or longer, not to date myself, but was 2011 that we've had a temporary, temporary inspector. And you're correct, that was when the storm was, and we only had, it was a gal. I think we only hired her for like, two or three months, too.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion on Agenda Item Number 3.
Move approval.
By Craig, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Amanda. Discussion on the motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number 13, Convention and Visitors Bureau will consider the approval of the annual contract between the Marshall Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we will also have the annual Convention and Visitor Bureau update. So with us tonight is the CVB Director, Cassie Weiss. Cassie?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Oh, sorry, not that tall. So I'll just start quickly with an update on Visit Marshall's side of things, and then I'll kind of go into the Red Baron. So.
Actually, why don't we take care of the contract first?
You want to do contract first?
Yes.
Do you want me to go through my Red Baron update then first?
No, you, okay, you.
No, it's okay.
You go in the order that you were planning.
Are you sure? I don't mind. I don't mind.
I didn't mean to sidetrack you.
No, that's okay. All right. So first, we'll just kind of go through 2022 in review, talk about some of the services that Visit Marshall provides to the community, a little bit about our financials, our strategic plan, and then we'll go into Red Baron Arena. So 2022 in review, marketing, some marketing that we did was some search engine optimization on our website where the company actually looks at what people are searching when they're looking at Marshall, and then they build pages into our website to kind of help better drive them and hopefully be able to come to our page and then come to our community. We also did a Google DMO project, which helps our local businesses boost up their Google DMO profiles. So when people are Googling things, they're actually showing up with the right address, right photos. We did a photography project with AB Photography where we did seasonal photo shoots. And then lastly, we did a semi that we wrapped with runnings, and that is the photo on the bottom there, and that goes kind of all around the Midwest. Next, we focused a lot on events in 2022. So some new events that we did, Youth Sports and Activity Expo, Mega Bingo, which was part of the City of Marshall's 150th, the craft beer show we brought back from 2019. And then we also started Prairie Jam, which is a concert that hosted Tyler Farr this year on the campus of SMSU, and we will do that again in 2023. And then lastly, is our community tourism support grant. So this year, we were able to donate $18,000 in cash to our local sports associations, tournament hosts, and event coordinators, and then about $13,000 in regional in-kind marketing. So we were able to give back that way. Our financials, we spend about 70% on our direct marketing with those marketing events, community support, and community investment, which is a new thing that we're looking at for 2023, where we want to be able to donate larger amounts of money into the community that can then hopefully result in more people staying overnight, bigger tournaments, bigger events, that kind of thing. And then our indirect spending is, you know, staffing, some of the local marketing that we do, and some print materials. 2022, just kind of a recap on some of the goals that we had then. So digital marketing, I talked a little bit about the SEO project, the photography project. We did some email marketing and some online advertisements through Explore Minnesota. Work with our tourism grant applications to apply five months in advance. I would say over 85% of them were able to apply far enough in advance where we could actually do print publications in South Dakota, Twin Cities, Wilmer area. The Lyon County Museum and opening an affiliate welcome center, and that is officially open. So they are listed on Explore Minnesota's website, as well as in their visitor guide as an affiliate welcome center. The fam tour, unfortunately, with the staffing issues, we were unable to do that just because our hospitality industry was hit so hard. So we're going to try to push that to 2023. And then strengthening our relationship with SMSU, I think just World Fest and Prairie Jam were two of the biggest things there on strengthening that relationship. So with that, our 2023 goals. So we're really looking to book more business meetings, expos, or trainings to draw in more business travel, hopefully getting some one-night midweek travelers, work with our local community to get the Visit Marshall brand around town. So we're looking at hotels, restaurants, boutiques, and tourist attractions to have brochure racks, QR codes, table tents, just things so that people will start driving to our website a little more when they're here. And then we're going to increase our fall advertising for outdoor travel weekends, focusing on those kind of niche markets. And then we also, we had a board retreat in September, so we kind of set some more long-term goals here. So increase business travel for expos, events, and business meetings in town, and working with our local community businesses to hopefully host some regional type events. Increase tournaments or events for some niche sports. Increase the number of state tournaments or events, examples being state sports tournaments, governor's pheasant opener, regional college events, or possibly Hockey Day Minnesota. And then building new partnerships with our local outdoor associations like hunting, fishing, biking, hiking, so that we can better market those, those different areas. Any questions on Visit Marshall?
Thank you, Cassie. Questions?
All right. I'll roll right into Red Baron. So for 2022, just some different goals that we had kind of set last year. So streamlining the scheduling process, we worked with Marshall Community Services to kind of streamline the birthday party side of that. A lot of people, they would call us for a birthday party, and then they'd have to call Community Services to get skates. So we just made that a lot simpler, and we handle all of that. We contact Community Services now. And then we also developed a external Excel spreadsheet that us, Community Services, and Studio One all have access to on the backend to make sure that the scheduling is going a little bit better. Develop a strategic plan. I'll kind of talk about that here in a couple of slides. And then strengthen the relationship with our sponsors, which all of our sponsors except one renewed from when the arena opened five years ago. So we felt like that was a really big accomplishment. And then we did add one more in. So one left, we added one, and then one did do an additional sponsorship to take over naming rights as well. And then we also did $34,400 in dasher sales this year, which is about $3,400 more than last year. All right. So events that happened in 2022, I'll just kind of note some of the new ones. That was a regional hockey tournament, Youth Sports and Activity Expo, SMSU World Fest, ABE did a networking event, we did Mega Bingo, Pickers Paradise, and a business after hours. And then you'll see that we did eight weddings this summer. I suspect that number to go down quite a bit with the Upper Room being complete now and the Five Family Ranch coming to town. So that's why you see a lot of our focus shifting into business meetings and that kind of stuff. 2023 goals is continue to explore new ways to make the booking process easier for both us and the consumer. Look into options on how to utilize the expo floor for sports and activities when events aren't happening. Drive more business travel from local businesses. We saw a huge jump in our meeting spaces last year. We really want to capitalize that with our local community. And then start a list of potential renters, send them information on hosting events such as Christmas parties, business meetings, corporate trainings, industry. So I think in the past, a lot of our marketing has been really regional, and we're going to kind of try to bring that back home and focus on Marshall, and then kind of expand out within a 30 to 60 mile radius once we kind of have our local community on board. All right, five-year goals. So we're going to look at hosting some large business expos or meetings on the expo floor. We'd like to host 20% more business meetings in both the Blue Peak Club Room and the conference room. We want to better serve our sports that can participate on the expo floor through March through October, again, when we're not hosting events, events being the main focus there. We would like to host a youth state hockey tournament, and then an off-season state, not state, off-season hockey tournament as well. Some marketing that we did, just listed there. I think the one thing I didn't have on there was we built an entire new website, which is much more user-friendly. It has a prettier look, so people who are looking for events or weddings doesn't go to the homepage and just think that this is a hockey rink. So. And then the next page is just some different advertisements that we did, kind of the look of the ads. And I believe that is it. Any questions?
John?
Yeah, in the past, you've talked about putting a flooring over the ice in the wintertime when it's used. Is that still somewheres in the mix, thought about, dropped?
Yeah, it hasn't been discussed much since I've started. I know that they're extremely expensive, was one concern, and the other concern was the time that it takes to set it up and take it down for an event was another concern.
And another issue is where to store it when it's not.
Yeah, yeah, that's a very large issue.
Other questions?
John, you had my questions.
Oh, okay.
I think, Cassie, you just kind of skimmed over it, but just so the council's aware too, and I try to bring it up in my monthly recaps or weekly, or biweekly recap, that, you know, $18,000 in cash went to various organizations in town, you know, to help bring events into Marshall. Might not, all of them might not have put heads on beds, but there's a good share of them that did put heads on beds because we've seen that with our lodging tax go up. I think we've seen an increase in occupancy in our hotels, you know, and those that are only a one-day tournament or a one-day event, they're still buying gasoline or eating in our restaurants. So, you know, that number, I see it just continue to grow, and it's $18,000. And that doesn't count the in-kind marketing that we did on top of that. So again, that's just, you know, when I bring it up at the council meetings, yeah, we sponsored this event, sponsored that event, but overall, it's a good chunk of money. So.
Taking a step back to the discussion about the floor cover idea, Sharon and I and Lauren Deitz had the opportunity to tour the event facility indoor recreation addition to the Wilmer arenas where they have two sheets of ice, and then they built on the indoor rec center. And I asked if they had ever considered the floor covering, and the response was that they had in the past, I believe, and then they got, it was just too much of a pain to deal with. So they, they did not recommend going with the floor cover.
Yeah. I think most of our events, too, are non-hockey season, so we don't really run into a lot of issues of it being hockey season. It's more just, yeah, it's just not a super high time for events.
Other than hockey.
Other than hockey. Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
The item then on the agenda would be the, consider the annual contract between the City of Marshall and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Sharon, do you have this or?
I can. We did meet the division director and admin and community services and Cassie, and discussed things like scheduling and made some minor changes to the agreement. But, and I could, I didn't have this in front of me, I can certainly pull it up, but we did not increase the fee paid to CBB for this particular contract. It's the same as the previous year.
Questions?
The only question I have is, Cassie, the address needs to be changed in the contract. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the annual contract between the City of Marshall and the Convention and Visitors Bureau?
So moved.
Russ?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. So we'll move then to Agenda Item Number 14. This is a request for a variance adjustment permit by Levi Bond, representing Iron Horse Development. The location is 1213 East College Drive. This was considered by the Planning Commission, which is recommending its approval. Ilya?
Thank you, Mayor Council. So this is a request for variance for a building for a family dollar store, family dollar, dollar tree store. There are two parts to that request. One is the side yard to reduce it from 10 feet required to five feet. Another one is the parking, to reduce the required parking from, to reduce the parking from required 33 parking spaces to 29 parking spaces. Any variance request should meet a three-pronged test for practical difficulties. One, it should be reasonable. The other one is the property should be unique. And the third one is it should not change the character of the building, also the character of the area. So you can see in the memo that some of those, in Steph's mind, some of those requirements are met, and one is not really. However, when, during the Planning Commission meeting, the owner representative presented his point of view and gave the support for meeting all those tests. So the Planning Commission recommended approval for both of them, and that's what the recommendation is for you. But you consider there are some alternative for that.
Okay.
And the owner representative is here, so.
And on note for the record, the council has received a letter from B&amp;G Properties of Marshall, which is the adjoining property. So, and they raised some, some questions.
It was presented to the Planning Commission, too.
Okay. So questions for Ilya?
Just primarily, I guess, more in regards to the letter that we, we just, I just see it now. Is there, I mean, there's a couple of questions that I'd be interested in the answer. I don't know if you're able to answer any of those at this point.
I can try all the, owner representative can try.
Primarily, I think part of it was, what about water runoff? Which kind of direction are things going to flow? I know it kind of goes towards the back, but I mean, is there a, you know, is it going to kind of go to one side or to another lot, or?
I think it's mostly to the back, right?
So I'll, I'll let you come up, up and introduce yourself, and you can maybe address some of these questions, too. So, so there's questions, yeah, questions about drainage, there's questions. So you might want to address parking, as long as you're up here, too. So, and the, we need you to speak into the microphone. You can adjust the, that up if you want, so.
Good afternoon, Council. My name's Levi Bond. I'm with Iron Horse Development, LLC. We're the developers for this project here. Unfortunately, I've not seen the neighbors' letter. So if you have specific questions other than the water runoff, let me know. Concerning the water runoff, Ilya and Jason were both correct. It's going to go to the north. By doing the parking variance, we create more landscaping area in the back. We're going to have probably just a little detention cell there to contain all the water on our property, and it's going to go to the north into that ditch. This.
Maybe clarify that you got about a 40-foot section on the, I would say, east side.
North-east corner, yeah.
In the back parking lot. That's kind of the way the flow of the water would.
So, well, the engineer will probably put a crown somewhere in that front drive there, and then there's already existing storm sewer in the street. Everything else from the building and that delivery area, see, and the parking to the north is going to go to the north. It won't cross anyone else's property.
Okay.
And then, I don't know if you guys want me to go back through what we discussed of Planning Commission or not. I don't know if you'd already looked through that.
We'll open up if there's any other questions that the council has, as long as the owner's rep is available here.
Okay, I'll be available till the end of the meeting. So just let me know.
Okay. Craig?
Yeah, just one of the questions that the, that the adjoining property owner raised was, when backing out of the parking slots, I believe they're talking on the south side of the building, is that edge of that parking lot, is there going to be a defining line? Is there curbing there? Are you going to have that blend with the adjoining lot?
It's going to be blended with the adjoining lot, partially because actually some of his paving and that drive actually come onto our property, and we're not going to tear that out. So we're going to just adjoin everything that we have with that. Historically, there's been cross-access across all these parcels on the front edge. He was not interested in putting that on paper. We're just going to put everything back how it was when the previous business was there, still pave, still allow them access, account for it. But we're not planning on using anyone else's property for any part of our deliveries or our customer traffic. Everything will come in and out of that 32-foot drive that we proposed. Got it. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, any other questions?
We're short four parking spots, and I'm not saying adding, because I know, way back when I was planning zoning, you were not a fan of sea of asphalt, as you refer to it as. But there would be no reason why those four spots couldn't be added in back if the city so choose to go that route, is it? Because you've got forty feet. We're only short four spots.
All right, no, there is room for that parking spot.
But we're just trying to keep it more grass, more?
Sorry, part, yes, part of the consideration was more grass, and also that's to me, the current landscaping standards are twenty-five percent of the area outside the building footprint has to be landscaped. This will allow us to do it. If there's four more stalls, it's going to get, there's going to have to be some moving of that trash can around, trying to create some landscape islands and stuff like that to get to it, and I don't know that we can. Also, just, I don't know if this was in the planning commission minutes, but our tenant is okay with going down to usually like twenty-five, they prefer twenty-eight to thirty stalls. And then, using the IT parking generation manual, you really only need like twenty-seven, twenty-eight stalls, just depending on how you do the calculations. So, we're meeting how the Institute of Traffic Engineers would calculate it, how our tenant wants it. It's just that code is a little bit more restrictive, or however you may want to put it in the city of Marshall.
Would you concur with that, Ilya?
Well, obviously, some calculation, I cannot vouch for the, whatever their history is, or whatever other stores are, have, or how they calculated the number of time, time people usually spend in the store. But yes, that was presented to us, the planning commission.
Well, I know parking, and as you guys know from the council, that's been an issue because for a while, we had really large parking requirements, and they've been shrunk.
We reduced, correct, yes.
Any other questions?
I don't know. No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Back to Ilya. Any other questions for Ilya? If not, any comments from the planning commission?
No, I mean, there was definitely a lot of good questions in the meeting. Parking was a concern, just making sure that that was enough. That was the question, was like, are you sure? But assured everybody that it was enough. The side yard, obviously, it wasn't that big of a concern. They were more about, why would we want to turn down somebody who wants to develop this property? The borders are kind of, or the boundaries, the side yards are different all up and down East College Drive, and so let's let them do their thing, so.
And I believe in, I don't know if I remember, there's a, the ditch behind, there's closed, but there's a ditch back there for that water to run into, correct? I remember that ditch used to be open.
Well, that is ditch sixty-two, and there is actually a overflow on top. There's a depression, and there's a ninety-six-inch culvert underneath there.
Yeah, I believe it's eighty-four in this location, but yeah, very large diameter storm sewer with a swale on top, as you mentioned.
It was easy for, you know, their concern was water, but easy for water flow to get out there at the heavy rain.
But you are concerned, or you are correct that prior to nineteen ninety-four, there was a, an open ditch there, so, and that was a big problem.
I would note that by not requiring the extra parking spaces in the back, you are leaving enough room for a small stormwater detention cell, which helps attenuate flood flows and helps, helps the ditch out, so.
And that would also catch pollutants out of the parking lot to help the freshwater system.
Correct.
Sediments.
Thank you. We'll go with that.
Any other questions? If not, you have the request before you. I would open it up for a motion.
Yes, I would make a motion to approve the variance.
I'll second.
Motion by John, seconded by Amanda to approve the, the request as recommended by the planning commission. Discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor? So, in regards to this letter, which we just got, and I just want people from the public, the, the planning commission, these, the adjoining neighbor did, that had that letter at the planning commission meeting.
Yes, they did.
But they did not show up and ask questions.
They did not.
They didn't express their concerns at that meeting.
They did not come to the meeting, and they did talk over the phone, I believe, with Ilya, and they submitted that letter.
They called me and said that they would not be able to come, but that's why they sent the letter.
Okay, and the one question I have is, is on the bottom of the first page, it says, "By allowing this building, which is obviously too big for the lot," I'm going to trust it, "you have done your job on allowing a building that's too big for the lot, to be located only five feet off the property line, is this setting an acceptable standard for all buildings on College Drive, and what does this do for future expansion that we may want to do on our property?" Those are fair questions. I don't, I don't know how the planning commission addressed them, or how, so I'm looking for answers on that.
I can probably address one thing. I mean, the building fits.
So, it's not too big?
It's not too big. It's, it's a matter of location and width to allow for the drive on the side.
Okay.
So, the building will fit one way or the other.
Okay.
And as was mentioned earlier, Mr. Mayor, the developer did point out other properties on East College Drive that did not have the ten-foot setbacks.
Got it, perfect.
That there are other properties.
So, the, the standards have already been set, so it's, yes, okay.
But I'd also add, though, each variance adjustment permit are considered by the, by the planning commission and the council on its own merits.
Right.
So, so it isn't that we're setting policy for the future for adjoining properties.
Right. A variance is a variance.
Exactly, yes.
Well, and quite frankly, if we, and I'm not saying to promote this, but we could slide that building over five feet, because thirty feet's the width we're trying to make our roads currently. You know, Jason, you and I, we've had that conversation for years. So, thirty feet isn't horrible if we had slid the building over five feet either, because am I correct in saying, Jason, we've been pushing for thirty-foot roadways?
We're a little wider than that, but you're correct that we have been trying to narrow them. But I think the developer would speak to the fact that they do want this width on that west side of the property. They, I think they were against making that narrower for a few different reasons, and he can speak to that as needed.
So, on that, long note, that quick, because that's a great question, and my, my looking at this, if, and the store takes deliveries by tractor-trailer, correct? By a full-size, they're not, they're not little short pup trailers, they're a full-size tractor-trailer.
It's almost pin-delivered, but yes, maybe sixty-seven, it's a seventy-three foot.
Sure, so they would, the driver would pull in across the front lot and then back in, so he'd do an L-turn.
Correct.
And then back down, so he's not backing in off of College Drive. You want enough room that he can back off. That's the, the desire for the thirty-five feet, is to give him enough tail swing to back down.
Yes, as it sits now, he can back directly to the door without crossing any property lines and without having to back in off College Drive.
Right.
Pulls directly in, backs directly to the door, then he can sit there with allowing enough, sorry, I probably gave the mic for this, with allowing enough room for cars to still pass by him.
Sure.
Like on a thirty-five foot.
Yep, okay. Very practical.
Because you drive semi.
I do, I know that. I've, I've had that problem, where you have to back the wrong way down a one-way.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion?
Preferred way to drive, right.
If not, I will move us to a vote on the motion. And the motion passes. Yep.
Next one is mine, too.
Agenda item number fifteen is, and we're glad that you're staying right there. Agenda item number fifteen, conditional use permit for McNally Management LLC. This location is seven oh five West Main Street. Once again, Ilya?
Thank you, Mayor Council. So, this is a request for a conditional use permit, this time not variance, conditional use permit for the advertising sign. Advertising sign by ordinance require conditional use permit, and that's why the request is always coming in front of you. This sign is not what we saw lately, it's not a digital sign, it's a standard, typical, old-style vinyl sign. There are four panels total, you can see on the drawings, so there are two panels on each side, one above each other. This sign meets the requirements for minimum size, sorry, for maximum size, and it also meets the requirement for the number of panels and the distance from the residential areas. So, recommendation is to approve it with the conditions, which basically makes sure that everything is done correctly and the, and that is satisfied.
Okay. Any comments from the planning commission?
Um, no, there weren't really, I mean, when he said it wasn't lit, there really weren't any concerns.
Questions, councilors?
Ilya, there's a sign close to the sidewalk there now, isn't there? Like, for the business, business sign? If you may go by there.
It's a business sign.
Business sign, so this one is not going to replace that, this is going to be an addition.
Correct, correct. Because it's, since it's a billboard advertising sign, it doesn't need to meet the requirements for the maximum square footage of the signs, signage on the property.
So, this is a more of a billboard sign.
Correct, that is a billboard.
Versus their business sign that they have.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Right.
If not, you have the request, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number sixteen, consider the resolution providing for signage at E Street and the Bruce Street, Lion Street intersection. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Caught me off guard, I wasn't checking the order here. So, we brought this to the PIT committee recently on November seventh. I think we're all aware of the flashing beacons on E Street and the flashing stop signs at Bruce and Lion and E Street intersection. Those are, they're getting older, and, you know, as staff looks at them, we're just, we're wondering if they're really necessary any longer. We had a good discussion at PIT, and I can let that, those committee members speak to it, but city staff would propose to remove the flashing beacons and just put in standard stop signs at that location. It's our view that there is a curve on E Street, but you can see the stop sign from down the road. There is no hidden stop around a short curve. So, just to be sure and make sure we're, we're doing our due diligence, we'd propose slightly oversized stop signs with some reflective strips on the, the poles, but, but remove the beacons. And I can let the committee speak after that.
Okay, any input from the?
I can add some input, because I, I go way back to remember when these beacons were installed, and maybe you, I don't know if you were in town at the time. That originally was not a four-way stop.
No.
And when they put up the four-way stop, the beacons were not put there, and I had a license at the time, because I remember blowing that stop sign and wondering, where the heck did that come from? So, the beacons were added, and, correct me if I'm wrong, about three or four months afterwards to prevent, you know, to remind people, now we have a four-way stop. So, and that, that was the reason for the beacons. The stop sign has now been there, four-way stop has been there all of twenty-five years.
Right, Lion Street at, prior to that time, was actually at Gravel Road, and then when Independence Park was developed, and then following that parkside school, and then, then?
The four-way stop came in.
Four-way stop, yes, so.
And the houses, seriously, no houses along there. I don't think Lion Street, Lion Street didn't go through Main Street, because that's what the PAP's delivery used to be, was there, actually. That really goes back years.
Aging yourself.
I am, that goes.
PAP's, Greenbelt.
Greenbelt, that's what it was, Greenbelt.
It was a PAP one, yeah.
That really dates you, too, Russ.
I remember that, Greenbelt.
I do remember the Greenbelt.
So, now we know the history. Moving forward is, you know, the real question that was considered by staff and the public improvement is whether or not those lights are, are necessary, and if they are necessary, they probably need to be updated, they've been in for, as you say, thirty years, so.
I'd make a motion to remove them. And I'll second that, that's.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay, agenda item number seventeen is a statement of annual performance evaluation for city administrator Sharon Hanson. The city council did meet prior to this time to consider the annual evaluation, and then I will read into the record a summary of, of our discussion and the, and the process. So, Sharon Hanson began employment as Marshall City Administrator on November sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. Each year, on or about the anniversary of her employment as administrator, the city council conducts a review of the administrator's performance. Evaluation instrument evaluated ten critical performance competencies with four to five performance measures for each critical performance competency, for a total of forty-eight performance measures. Each performance measure was assigned a numeric score of one to five, with five being the highest performance level. The city council reviewed the results of the performance review with city administrator Hanson at a special meeting earlier this evening, November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. The critical performance criteria and compiled performance scores are summarized as follows. Job knowledge and professional skills, four-point-two-five, relations with elected members of the city council, four-point-zero, policy execution, four-point-two-nine, strategic vision, four-point-zero-three, fiscal management, four-point-zero-one, intra-governmental affairs, four-point-one-seven, reporting and communications, four-point-two-eight, citizen-community relations, four-point-two-seven, staffing, four-point-one-five, and supervision, three-point-eight-seven. Overall performance for all criteria from the city council members and the mayor is four-point-one-three, indicating a high level of performance, highly effective leadership and performance, often exceeding the challenging performance expectations established for this position. Sharon Hanson is currently classified as Step H. Following the performance evaluation, the council may consider a step increase to Step I on the wage schedule. With that, I'd open up for any additional comments that any member of the council has. If not, a motion would be in order to accept the annual performance review and establish the wage classification for Sharon Hanson to be moved to Step I on the wage schedule.
Moved.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Jim.
No, not by Sharon. She made the motion.
Yeah, it's okay, a motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Now, discussion on the motion, my apologies for that.
It's okay.
Any discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
We'll move then to the item that was added to the agenda, and that is appointment to Convention and Visitors Bureau. And the council also met earlier this, this evening, a special session interviewed an applicant for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and based on the application, that interview, I would recommend that Dr. May Lee Malview be appointed to a term on the Convention and Visitors Bureau, representing the city of Marshall on the CBB, and I'd offer that as a recommendation, entertain a motion to affirm.
So, move.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting.
I wasn't at the interview.
And the motion does pass. Thank you. Okay, we will move then to agenda item number eighteen, Commission Board Liaison Report. The Regional Development Commission did meet since we last met. There will be some, some changes in leadership on the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the, or excuse me, on the Regional Development Commission. The, the current chairman is the mayor of Pipestone, and he will not be continuing in that, that role. There'll be a new mayor of the city of Pipestone, so there will be a new chair of the Regional Development Commission effective on January one. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Merit Center board met on November seventeenth, and I was actually able to attend this meeting to the surprise of many of my compadres there, so I'm glad that I could surprise them and provide a little bit of entertainment. Department of Public Safety continues to use the track for CDL exams in September, October. They did thirty-four exams using the skills pad and part of the driving track. September and October, Minnesota West conducted EVAC courses, motorcycle safety, CPR training, steam and hot water boiler classes, dental continuing ed and CDL training at Merit Center. So, Minnesota West continues to use the campus and, and is running, they're actually expanding some, are looking at expanding some additional stalls and adding to their CDL training. They've got a severely high demand and actually have a full-time CDL trainer now on campus there. There's just a lot of push with that. September ninth and tenth, Mankato PD rented the classroom in the driving track and, and trained seventeen of their officers on the tracks. We're getting a lot of good regional use, and actually across the entire state, a lot of utilization. On September twentieth, Marshall On September twentieth, Marshall PD provided a presentation and tour and the law enforcement simulators for twenty-two attendees, was that part of the night out, Jim, or is it just a general?
It's not just a general presentation to.
Okay. Sure, so that's good, you know, a little more community outreach and education there. The fire department is continuing to use the rescue tower to conduct technical rope rescue. I know it was also used as the haunted tower, again, for Halloween by Community Services, and I guess that was very well attended. ADM is also using the rescue tower and the confined entry space, our tank for their industrial training courses, and on September twenty-second, they ran twenty-five of their employees through their, Southwest Private Industry Council's been touring and using it. RALCO has had their leadership or leader cast event at Merit Center in October, they ran ninety-one of their business leaders through that two-day course. USDA National Resources Association conducts their quarterly training at Merit Center. Southwest Health Preparedness Coalition is holding their quarterly meetings there. On October, they had twenty-six attend, and then the haunted tower, they said they had two hundred and ninety-six people went through the tower, so that's awesome. There's Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, the NFA, safety, a bunch of their acronyms for the Fire Academy are doing a bunch of training there. And then there's also talk now, and Alex could address this probably way better than I could, but the Southwest Radio Board for Law Enforcement is actually looking at putting a training, and then it would be a backup dispatch council at the Merit Center, which just enhances that again as an emergency operations center and good backup. So, that's kudos again to the council, to the city, to Alex for making sure that we have the best technology and capabilities there that you can have. So, again, it's just another asset for the city, but for the entire region. Their, the classrooms under the driving track were used forty-eight out of sixty-one days available in September and October, so September totals were three hundred and fourteen through there, October to seven hundred and sixty-three for a total of a thousand seventy-seven people. So, that's great. I also attended the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission meeting last week, and there's a lot of talk about continuing both the positive about the hotel development, but also excitement about some more potential interest in development, and that includes possibly a property sale on the adjacent property at Red Baron, which would also include another restaurant potential too. So, just a lot of good things happening all the way through the community, there's a lot of interest in Marshall, and, you know, Cassie did a great job of presenting the values of Red Baron and that, so I'll kind of leave it at that. But the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission continues to push for multi-day tournaments and a lot of good things happening in Marshall, and so to our Parks Department and Park and Rec, kudos, because we have very well-maintained, prepared facilities, and they're in high demand, and I think that's another hat off to Marshall and to the council and the work they've done to continue to invest and maintain our properties. That's all I have.
Thank you, Craig, Steve?
So, the Cable Commission did not meet, Community Services did not meet, EDA met. Dave Parsons came and gave a great presentation on taxes and how you assess the taxes. He is really good at explaining that, and so, to be fair, the state is the one who ultimately sets the rates for taxes, and the assessor's job is to make it kind of fair, and there's always changes, and the changes are based upon market values, and those are changing rapidly, and we all know that those are changing rapidly. It was a great time to sell your house this past couple of years, and we can expect, the good news is, that means your market values probably went up, the bad news is, it's not pay this year, it's pay in two years, and so in two years, you're going to get a bill, and it's probably going to be a sticker shock to you, but that's because your neighbor sold their house for, or similar properties to your house for a significant amount than what you think. We ultimately, at city council and the state, set the tax rates, and that's to make the, you know, improvements to our city. So, Dave did a great job at explaining that. Don't ever hate the assessor's office, they're there to assess and make things fair, not to punish you. And if you ever have a question about your tax rates, it's not this last meeting that we, or the last letter that you got that you come and argue about, it's the one in the spring, and unfortunately, we learned something that typically, there's what, six people, Dave, that show up at those meetings, if that? I mean, so, come to the March one if you don't like the assessment on your taxes and your property value. The other thing that we talked about was Market Street Mall, the developer there is looking at eight million dollars to fix that place, to get it up to speed, that's a lot of money. So, that's still in flux, there's a lot of other competing things. Shopko is looking for one more tenant, but there's competition between, do we go into the mall, do we go into Shopko, you know, it's nice to have these spaces, but they're kind of jockeying and competing with each other, so more to come on that. The Project Horizons is still negotiating some stuff for town and their development. So, the good news is, there's a lot of work going into the area, the, that's the great news, the bad news is, we don't have any final people signing the dotted lines and building yet, but hopefully it's coming, so. I'll defer anything else to Mr. De Kramer.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Amanda?
Planning Commission met, we kind of talked about a lot of it tonight, the sign that we were just approved and the variance, we also talked about a preliminary plat for Dollar General. That is very interesting, that building's built on two lots, and so the lot needs to be combined into one with no issues, and then a couple ordinance changes, very minor verbiage on parking, that's about it.
Okay, thank you, John?
Public Housing Commission met November fourteenth, kind of a hot items, it was a review of the punch list, they had their parking lot redone, and just wrapping that up, went through the punch list, and that's pretty well taken care of. Did see the unaudited financial statements for the year, and that there turned out basically, as expected, very close to the budget items. And just another little item, Executive Director's going to be attending a meeting in December and looking at some new software for use in public housing, and they're having a demonstration in St. Peter, so he'll be attending that to take a look at it. Councilman Meister did a pretty good job, a very good job at covering the EDA meeting, other than just, yeah, comment, assessor's office had us on the edge of our seats, just, you know, all excitement on listening to how our taxes are generated, so, that's good. The Mercer Municipal Utilities met last night, two biggest items on there, they had a public hearing regarding the electrical and water rates, there was one resident that did attend the meeting. The electrical rates, there's essentially a zero percent increase in the electrical rates for the next three years, there's a couple of minor adjustments in the base rate, generally under a dollar, in some areas, so just averaging, or setting those a little bit more accurately. As far as the water rate, it's going to be about a five percent increase in the water. Really, most of that is tied back to the chemical prices, the increases in chemical prices, they're seeing upwards in the area of about twenty-seven percent increase in the chemicals that are needed for the water treatment facility. And with the expansion of the water treatment facility, of course, there's some additional chemicals needed, so that's one of the bigger issues on the, regarding the water. Just kind of a little sideline on that, oh, they did approve the partnership agreement that we went through in the last meeting, so that was kind of expected, but we're all in agreement, that's a, it's a good partnership agreement there. They had a preliminary discussion that, I know I find it interesting, but the generator that's sitting out by MMU, diesel generator, it's fifty-three years old. Just, you know, kind of some round numbers, this next year, that generator, basically just sitting there, is going to bring in about seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars into the city, just because of the capability of that generator and that they can fire it up and get it going within about a half, fifteen-minute, half-hour period of time, bring it up to full capacity, and they've had the test to run that, and they've had to do that in the past. Missouri River Energy Services, which is buying the power off that, has also made some changes this, next several years, that they're looking to increase that capacity throughout their area of coverage. So, they're offering some good incentives to expand on that, so their, Marshall Municipal Utilities is looking at what we could possibly do to first as a replacement for that generator, although it's operating properly, and they've got maintenance going on it, but at fifty-three, there's issues that can happen, so how can we replace that with about fifteen, must be fifteen megawatts coming out of that thing, and do that in probably separate generators, smaller generators, put in strategic locations, so if there ever is a problem, you know, those can be fired up and handle some outages in an area that, whether a major storm or something like that. So, that's very preliminary at this point, they're just starting to do the investigation analysis on it, and it's going, you know, generators right now, well in the area of a two-year delivery, so it's nothing that's going to happen fast, but they're starting on it. Kind of a sideline on that, if you notice, the work is being done where the solar farm is going, that is going to be one of the, I would say, newer versions of solar farms, because it's going to include a battery backup setup, so should the power go out and that, let's say, nighttime, that can provide, I believe it's up to four hours of power off the battery system out there, so that's going to be another nice addition to have in the community, so just keeping those things going, that it's for the region and for the grid, but, you know, it's something that if we need that, it's right in our backyard, so that's it.
Okay, thank you, John, Russ?
I'm sure EJ would like some of that money that they're going to, that we're going to get back, that's seven hundred thousand?
Yeah, doesn't work that way.
We heard a presentation tonight from CBB, but just a couple of things to add on, the Fairbanks Ice Dogs will be back in town in about ten days, they'll be staying and practicing in town during those ten days, they will be bringing in spectators and family members. Thanksgiving, after you're done heating turkey over the weekend, they have a boys' and girls' hockey tournament on Friday and Saturday at the arena. So, Adult Community Center met, I was unable to attend, but just a lot of minor little things, they did, we have hired a program specialist, Jenny D. Ryder, Ruder, is hired as a program specialist, they have a, the building was inspected, and they had a couple of minor things to take care of with caulking around the dishwasher room and things like that, and then Scott did, Scott Vandermelon did update the committee on the rental fee schedules and spoke of the future rentals of the kitchen. Library Board did meet, couple of things, they're still having trouble with some kids after school, so they're going to continue to, they just wanted to make the board aware of the problem, discussion on various options, and I'm sure we'll take about maybe banning them from the library altogether, we're looking at maybe getting some additional security cameras. One thing that was a surprise to the board was that we got our insurance bill for the property, general insurance, and budgeted sixty-five hundred dollars for twenty-three, but the bill will be over fifteen, or about fifteen thousand dollars, and I did call Carla and ask that, it's because the valuation of the building went from five point two million to seven point two million, so Dave, we can blame that on you? No?
No.
But the contents went down, but anyway, that's a huge eighty-five hundred dollar expense that is not in the budget for two thousand twenty-three, so hopefully we'll have savings in other areas that we can pick up that difference, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
So, that valuation, that was the insurance carrier, right?
They do an appraisal, I believe it's every five years, so.
Jim?
Might have that made.
Then to, council member, individual items, Jim?
I've got a couple of things, the first one I have is I had a gentleman, Jason Storm, and I actually brought this up in Castor, he emailed me about the lack of open skating at early times at Red Baron Arena, and he says he's going to watch the meeting tonight, see if we addressed it, so I'm glad you're watching, Jason, if you are, but I have sent the email off to Sharon, so it is being addressed or looked at. The other thing I have, Steve, is you brought up meetings, I believe December sixth is our truth and taxation meeting, and that's when the public, and I think since I've been on council, we've maybe had four people at it over six years, but that's when the public have input on our budget, I believe if I'm correct in saying that. So, I would like to, I'd like to see the room full, I'd like to actually double the six I've seen, or four I've seen in six years, the eight would be nice, but that's a meeting to come for the public to vote, or to voice their opinion on our budget. And the last thing I had, and I know I sent it off to EJ and Sharon, but other counties have sent out nice breakdowns of the budget that is going out there, and I know Lyon County's had change in staff, and I know I chatted with Sharon about it, but we can encourage our county to participate in that, and EJ, you can maybe fill in later on what this is, but it's a, it's a nice form, and I think it's required by the state too, correct? Or was, and this is very informative, because it puts on your county budget, your city budget, and your school district budget, a proposed budget for that year, and it's just, it's, I don't have a copy one here, but they're very nice, I've received them from, this is the only county that I have not received them from, I don't know, Bob, if you've got one from your property or other properties, they're nice to see, and it really spells out the budget nicely. EJ, if you could elaborate a little bit on that, that'd be great.
What he's referring to is some of the supplemental information that was required by statute to go into effect this year for the truth of taxation notice, it's a supplemental piece of paper that comes out, what Lyon County did, along with, excuse me, twenty-nine other counties in Minnesota, they use the same computer vendor, was decide to do that as a supplement, but put it on their website instead of the mailed notice. The statute requires parcel specific, so it is for your particular township or city, as well as your county, and then your applicable school district. So, rather than send out one document that had all school districts, cities, over five hundred, and the county on it, Lyon County chose to do that separately, and I'll talk about that during the work session a little bit as well.
Thank you. Russ?
The only thing I have is, I think the signal lights by all the schools, Jason, they're all operational, I believe, are fairly close to being operational, but it's very interesting, because I do a crossing guard in the morning and the afternoon, and to see a lot of vehicles, that sign starts flashing twenty miles an hour, and I, and there's, I would say, eight out of ten vehicles are going faster than twenty, and they, you can see the brake lights go on, so it is making a difference. I think once they become fully operational and working the way I think they should be working, I think you'll see more, but it's had an effect on vehicles, and just to let the public know that they're there for a reason, to slow people down, because the kids are crossing or something's happening, and I've seen from school buses to cars to trucks to everything, so it's not just one class of vehicles that are going twenty-four to thirty-two miles an hour, I mean, I could tell you that there's middle school staff that are going faster, and I can see them hit the brakes when I watch it, so they are working, so, thank you.
John?
About the only thing I've got is, you know, wish everybody a good Thanksgiving and a reminder that it's the start of, kind of the kickoff to the shopping season, although there's a lot of sales and everything else going on, but Small Business Day on Saturday, there's going to be a lot of activity starting Friday downtown here, and just shop downtown, just see what's all here.
That's it. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, along those lines, Friday, light up the night, parade, line up at five-thirty, parade starts at six, look for the shiny Vee'sman tanker.
Well, you have lots of candy?
Yes, depends on which end of the parade, if you're on this end, I guarantee, if you're on that end, it depends on how generously my daughter and brother-in-law throw it out. We won't be throwing it out of the truck, it'll come out of the side-by-side, I don't want kids running up on the truck. Don't complain about the music, because I might have picked it. Don't complain about the music, because I might have picked it.
I can't beat that, I've got nothing, sir.
My only thing is, the Planning Commission is almost full. There's one spot available, so sign up, come interview with us. We're really not intimidating, and serve your community.
Thank you. We'll move then to Staff Reports, starting with Sharon Anderson, City Administrator.
I have nothing.
Sharon Hanson. Did you remarried? Anderson, Sharon Anderson?
I still have nothing.
Forty-two years.
So Jason Hanson.
Just a... Nicely played, Bob.
Kind of averages out.
I just have a few things. With regard to the signage, Councilman, it's good to hear, and I've noticed that too, that you do see a lot of brake lights, so that's good. All of the Speed Zone signs are working, with exception to one on the south side on Saratoga Street. We're still working with the contractor to get that one operational. There's some sort of issue there. The RRFBs, the push-button crossers, I'll say they're kind of working. There's still some technical issues that aren't causing, that are causing all the lights to not engage at the same time, working through that. They kind of partially work, I'll say. So we're kind of struggling through that, but at least the School Zone signage is generally working and seems to be having a positive effect. With the beacon removal item earlier tonight, we may not get to that right away, but now that we have your approval, we'll work on that when the street department's ready. It could be yet this fall, it might be next spring, we'll see how that goes. And December 8, Building Department staff will be meeting with HVAC contractors to talk about the new license that you have recently approved, so we'll have a meeting with them to kind of explain that. The comp plan is under public review right now, so if anybody wants to go to the city's website under the Community Planning tab, you should be able to see something to click on there for Comprehensive Plan, and you can leave comments, you can access the document and leave comments online, or you can come to an open house, which I believe, I've got that up. Monday, November 28, from noon to 1:00 p.m., you can join virtually or in person in the council chambers. Also, Thursday, December 1, from 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. So some opportunities to discuss and review. I believe we'll have a public hearing on the comp plan at the Planning Commission at the next meeting. I think that's still the case. Other than that, I think that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Dennis?
Nothing.
We'll move then to the remaining items on the regular council meeting, including the information items, minutes from the library board, Public Housing Commission minutes, Planning Commission minutes, and then listing of building permits, as well as the listing of the upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting tonight? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda, to adjourn discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote.
Tired, sorry.
Close the voting. Does pass, we are adjourned.